We will now call the June 4th, 2024 Common Council Meeting to order roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Alderman Lorick is excused. Alderman Ritz.
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
Alderman Gale is excused. Alderman Guzekowski.
Here.
And that'll get us to the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please rise? Kristy, you have the honor.
Pledge of Allegiance to the five United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And we will now take a look at the minutes of May 21st, 2024. If there's no questions, comments, or discussion, motion?
Ritzel second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
And item four and five are recognitions. The first one is consideration of proclamation with congratulations for Jackson LaFond for receiving an Eagle Scout Award. Catherine, would you please read that in?
Certainly. Congratulations to Jackson Tyler LaFond for receiving the Eagle Scout Award. Whereas the conferring of an Eagle Scout is one of the highest awards that can be bestowed upon a Boy Scout, and whereas such award is an earned award in that the recipient must perform and successfully complete and pass the rigid requirements exacted to achieve an Eagle Scout Award, and whereas less than 4% of all Scouts actually achieve this goal, and whereas at a court of honor to be held at St. Paul Apostolic Catholic Church in Mount Pleasant, Wisconsin on Thursday, June 6th at 6:30 p.m., an Eagle Award will be conferred upon Jackson LaFond, and whereas as his Eagle Scout project, Jackson chose to construct three picnic tables for the Carrollton Elementary Playground, and whereas Jackson researched his project, organized and raised funds which were used to produce, to purchase equipments and supplies. Whereas in addition to consultations with school officials, Jackson recruited and coordinated the efforts of 24 volunteers which included fellow scouts and family members to assist with the planning, construction, placement, and installation of the picnic tables, putting in a total of over 117 man-hours of work, and whereas the addition of picnic tables on the Carrollton Playground will provide a safe shaded space for students to gather, sit, and talk. Whereas the Oak Creek Common Council wishes to recognize this noteworthy achievement of Jackson LaFond. Now therefore be it resolved, the Mayor and Common Council of the City of Oak Creek hereby extend their congratulations to Eagle Scout Jackson LaFond for having an Eagle Scout Award conferred upon him by the Boy Scouts of America. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Jackson LaFond presented and adopted this fourth day of June 2024.
Thank you, Catherine. Anybody on the council got any words for Jackson? Anyone familiar with him? Nope? No? You know, we regularly kind of see Eagle Scouts come through, which isn't normal for all communities, and I'm always amazed that exactly what our youth is doing for this community in and out, and Jackson's a shining example of this. I mean, putting back into playgrounds, his gifts and talents will be enjoyed by many people. It's just so noteworthy what the Scouts do for this community. It ain't even funny. I really wish the public just knew the dedication and commitment it takes to become an Eagle Scout, and, you know, on behalf of the city, all the citizens, the Common Council, and myself, our sincere thank you to Jackson. Congratulations on achieving Eagle Scout. If there's no other comments, motion?
Kirkowski, a move to approve Council Proclamation number 24-02. Congratulations to Jackson LaFond for receiving the Eagle Scout Award.
Ritzel second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gale?
I pardon me.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
And item five is also consideration of proclamations giving congratulations to Logan Onsager for receiving his Eagle Scout.
Congratulations to Logan Onsager for receiving the Eagle Scout Award. Whereas the conferring of an Eagle Scout is one of the highest awards that can be bestowed upon a Boy Scout, and whereas such an award is an earned award in that the recipient must perform and successfully complete and pass the rigid requirements exacted to achieve an Eagle Scout Award, and whereas less than 4% of all Scouts actually achieve this goal, and whereas at a court of honor to be held at Faith Community Church in Franklin, Wisconsin on Sunday, June 9th, 2024 at 2:00 p.m., an Eagle Award will be conferred upon Logan Onsager, and whereas his Eagle Scout project, Logan chose to update and enhance the Faith Community Church's outdoor patio area, and whereas in addition to cleaning the existing patio and benches which involved the removal of weeds, bleaching, repair, and tightening of bench units, and leveling patio stones, Logan also constructed two flower boxes, a firewood box, and assembled a fire pit in the patio area. And whereas Logan researched his project, organized and raised funds which were used to purchase equipment and supplies, and along with the efforts of 15 volunteers, put in a total of over 151 man-hours of work. And whereas Logan's attention to the outdoor patio refurbishment resulted in a safe and accessible outdoor oasis that can be utilized by everyone who comes to worship, mediate, and meditate and gather. Whereas the Oak Creek Common Council wishes to recognize this noteworthy achievement of Logan Onsager. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and Common Council of the City of Oak Creek hereby extend their congratulations to Eagle Scout Logan Onsager for having an Eagle Scout Award conferred upon him by the Boy Scouts of America. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Logan Onsager presented and adopted this fourth day of June 2024.
Thank you, Catherine. Anyone on the council familiar with Logan? You know, just once again, here we have yet another Eagle Scout, a shining example of the youth that resides here in the City of Oak Creek giving back to the community. Their ready learning servant leadership, and this is going to be our future leaders coming forward. As Catherine said, Eagle Scout is a rank that's very difficult to obtain. It's about a 12-year journey for a scout, and I've learned that not by being one, but by going to a lot of ceremonies and figuring out just what goes into becoming an Eagle Scout. It's a very, very special group to be in, and Oak Creek is proud to have yet another one here. We could, we'll offer our congratulations to Logan on behalf of the council and the mayor, and we'll look for motion.
Kirkowski, make a motion to approve Council Proclamation number 24-03. Congratulations to Logan Onsager for receiving the Eagle Scout Award.
Ritzel second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Marshall?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
And item six under new businesses, consideration of resolution amending the 2024 budget. Got Max with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Common Council. Max Gigan, Deputy City Administrator and Finance Director. So before you turn in his resolution, that will amend the 2024 budget. I'm going to bring up a presentation. All right, so the resolution is to amend the 2024 budget, and the purpose of the amendment is really threefold. First, it aligns the budget for the Tourism Commission with the direction they provided at their February 12th, 2024 meeting, which included amending their budget and budgeting funds to contract with the City of Oak Creek for tourism services. It also creates the Marketing and Public Relations Department budget, and it transfers $2 million of the general fund unassigned fund balance, so as the rainy day funds in excess of the maximum threshold established by our policy, undesigned reserve fund balance, and would move it to the capital projects fund to be spent on future one-time capital projects that we can certainly make decisions on in the future. So, as I mentioned, over the winter, the city administration worked with the Tourism Commission to establish a budget as well as direction on how to proceed with tourism services, and as part of that, at their February 12th meeting, directed us to proceed with a contract for services with the city. So for the Tourism Commission Fund budget, what you'll see in the amendment is we're no longer charging direct employee costs to the Tourism Fund, so those would instead be budgeted as part of the Marketing and Public Relations Department budget, and then there would be a contract for services. Additionally, it shifts local event costs to the city and its general fund, while the Tourism Commission will continue to sponsor those regional events that may conceivably generate room tax dollars, so things like the farmer's market, beer garden, the Pick It Out Creek, we had moved those to the general fund budget. The Tourism Commission did authorize to spend or to contribute $24,000 to help support those local events. They recognize that. There is a portion that those local events bring a quality of license to this community that contribute to that destination marketing aspect, and certainly wanted to contribute that. And then lastly, the Tourism Commission agreed to repay a city subsidy of $140,717. So with the COVID pandemic, we certainly saw our room tax receipts drop. Over a two-year period, they were deficit spending, and the city was providing financial assistance to kind of keep them afloat. Today, their fund balance is very strong, well over $500,000, which is far more than their current operating budget, so as part of that, we asked if they would be willing to repay at least one year the subsidy amount, given their strong financial position. So I have all the line items here. It is a lot, but I'll try and break it down as simple as possible. So this is the Tourism Fund, and what you see at the top is the adopted budget in this column, and then the amended budget, the column is kind of blocked here, and really on the revenue side, the big changes are those local events, you'll see the revenues for things like the farmer's market and the beer garden, sponsorships, those are all moved out to zero. We're essentially zeroing them out in the Tourism Fund budget and then recreating them in kind. Then you'll see those overall changes result in about $142,000 decrease in the tourism's revenues. You see that reflected on the line item below. So their total budgeted revenues would be $962,050. And then on the expenditure side, you'll see, looking at direct employee costs, indirect costs, utilities, a lot of the line items were zeroed out. We were directly charging certain personnel there, and given the concept of now going to a contractual relationship, zeroed all these out, and then you'll see here, we did budget a contractual amount which was agreed to. We did keep some minor line items for things like dues and memberships, miscellaneous sponsorships, so they do have some budget dollars allocated as they see fit. Advertising promotions, we didn't make any changes with the understanding that the new Director of Marketing and Public Relations will work with the Tourism Commission to figure out how they would like this amount of dollars to be afforded. And then we did increase sponsorships, $25,000, so if a nonprofit or another group came to the Tourism Commission and was looking for some sponsorship for their event, they had that ability to do it. Again, we are budgeting an expense that is a contract for services estimated at about $306,000. We had these conversations over the winter, and then you'll see costs for those regional events that are remaining in the Tourism Commission Fund, so those are things like Dog Days, Fall Fest, Cafe. And then additionally, you'll see the adjustment to the transfer out, so this would be transferring $140,000 from the Tourism Commission Fund budget to the general fund at the end. And you'll see at the start of the year, their fund balance was $638,000, or sorry, $571,000, and this would bring it down to about $400,000. So again, if you're looking at their fund balance in relationship to how much the contract for services is, it's well over 125%. So they're still in a very strong financial position. Even after repaying the subsidy, they have the capacity to enter into new agreements or pursue sponsorships or large-scale events as well. Certainly, it's not diminishing anything to the Tourism Commission. So the second portion of the budget amendment creates the Marketing and Public Relations Department budget and the general fund, and this is really twofold. So we're reallocating the existing communications and events personnel from the City Administrator's Office budget as well as the Tourism Commission budget to the Marketing and Public Relations Department budget. So certain personnel from communications coordinator, leisure services assistant are found within either one of those budgets or both of those budgets, and moving those to the new Marketing and Public Relations Department budget, as well as the shifting of the local events like the farmer's market, beer garden to this department budget as well. And then we are budgeting revenues for the Tourism Commission's contract with the city for tourism services. What this looks like mechanically, on the revenue side, you'll see a revenue for the tourism services contract. You'll see these commercial revenues, which are all revenues related to the farmer's market, the beer garden. That's about $114,000. And then you see some adjustments on the revenue offset, and that was to balance the budget, and the inter-fund transfer increased to $140,000. That's the subsidy. On the expenditure side, you'll see a slight reduction in the contingency, $105,000. So the Common Council may recall, as part of the budget development process for the 24 budget, we did set aside $105,000 in the contingency for that director position, so taking that out of there now and essentially appropriating it in that departmental budget. You'll see on the City Administrator's Office budget, you'll see reductions, and this is due to moving, the shifting of personnel from this budget over to the Marketing and Public Relations Department budget, so about a total decrease of $110,000 in personnel costs, otherwise no other changes to the Administrator's Office budget. In the Marketing and Public Relations Department budget, you'll see our direct employee costs, and I'll kind of get into a few slides, kind of what that affords from a personnel perspective. You'll see training, travel, telephone, you know, the things that most departments have in order to operate in the city, as well as that $24,000 to help with that local event discussed earlier. And at the other services, you see those corresponding expense line items for those local events, whether that's farmer's market or the beer garden. Overall, the Marketing and Public Relations Department budget would be $750,000 over that. And kind of looking at how the adjustments are made from an authorized position perspective. So the City Administrator's Office in the adopted 2024 budget includes the City Administrator, Communications Coordinator, a Tourism and Business Relations Manager, Leisure Services Assistant, and the Communications and Marketing Intern. So essentially, it included four for full-time personnel, or five full-time personnel and one part-time. And you can see that kind of got zeroed out, so that office would just be the City Administrator and the Management Assistant. And then in the Marketing and Public Relations Department, you'll see director position, Communications Coordinator, two Marketing and Public Relations Specialists, you know, it's kind of a placeholder title, certainly. It's really incumbent on the director to kind of evaluate the operation, make determinations as to what exactly positions are needed, but we do have two positions, full-time positions budgeted for Marketing, Communications, and Public Relations. The Leisure Services Assistant, which is Paula who does events, and then all of the part-time farmer's market staff. That's kind of how the positions break out and how they're shifting between City Administrator's Office and then the Marketing and Public Relations Department. And then lastly, the budget amendment is moving $2 million of our undesigned fund balance, our unassigned fund balance. So as a city, we have a policy to maintain that rainy day fund at a minimum of 15% to 25% of total annual revenues plus the amount of state shared revenue previous year. So pretty high and high threshold. We've been over the 25% for the last three years. Currently, the unassigned fund balance is projected to be about $10.4 million at the end of 2023, which is at 31.6%, so well over. So the city has the ability to spend up to $2.15 million of that fund balance and still remain at the upper threshold of that balance. So what we're asking is to amend the budget and transfer $2 million to the Capital Projects Fund in order to support future capital projects. The reason we're asking to do this is part of the budget amendment today versus say, let's talk about it next year, is that we have to comply with the expenditure restraint incentive program, so essentially, the state has a limit on how much your general fund budget will go up one year to the next. That amount is 60% of your net new construction plus an inflationary factor over that 12-month period. However, with last year's adoption of Wisconsin Act 12, which was the additional shared revenue, they exempted all communities from that budgetary limit from one year to the next. So it's really prudent on us to kind of take advantage and be able to transfer this money out while we're not restricted. If we had to wait a year and then make this decision, you know, we could be in a tough position where we potentially could be exceeding that threshold, and there would not really be a mechanism to get this money out of the undesigned fund balance unless you did it in small chunks, like say $200,000 a year over seven to 10 years. So really, again, just trying to take advantage of the state law and the changes that's afforded to us. Looking at our general fund balance, and this is as of 2020, the end of 2023, you can see where it was at 2022. The unassigned fund balance is kind of the rainy day fund we're talking about. We're just under $10 million. You can see we're now at about $10.4 million here, and then you can kind of see how the math works with the annual revenues for the general fund last year's state shared revenue, and kind of what the threshold limits. So the top limits should say we would have $8.2 million rainy day fund. We're currently at $10.4 million, so that's kind of where that difference comes from. You know, question as to why it's grown, you know, certainly as we've kind of recovered from the COVID-19 pandemic, we've seen development activity increase, higher interest rates, you know, the city's interest earnings have been in the millions of dollars when they were in the tens of thousands of dollars just two short years ago. And we don't really budget the interest earnings as part of the operating budget because they are so volatile. You really don't want to be balancing those reoccurring operating expenses with those interest earnings because, you know, as interest rates go down, we'll certainly have challenges making those budgetary obligations for things like this. So that's where we've been seeing surpluses of pretty significant amounts the past two to three years, and really looking for the opportunity today to try and leverage that and spend that on one-time capital projects. And just in the budget, you'll see at the end, it's shown as this inter-fund transfer out, and the total general fund budget would go from $33 million to $35,535,300. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. It's Common Council.
Any questions?
I have a couple of comments. First of all, I want to acknowledge Andrew and Max's work from the tourism side. They put a lot of effort in to work out a passable and usable budget for tourism that connected both the tourism goals and the city's goals as far as tourism and making this an attractive place to live. So, good job, guys.
Thank you, Jim.
I think it makes a lot of sense to transfer in when you can into the rainy day. Certainly, there will be days when we have to transfer it the other way, but it's good to be in a position where it's good thinking.
So I just want to thank you for that, Alderman Ritz. That, you know, it was been a little bit of a journey and changing perspectives, and this is really a mile marker, and I want to thank Max for doing an incredible job on the presentation and much more succinct than I would have been at describing this, so I'll be brief. This is really a mile marker. This is really an enabling action by the Common Council to allow us to put the pedal down and move forward with the, really, the continuation of the capacity and resiliency plan in this vein by way of establishing the new Department of Marketing and Public Relations. So you saw all of those FTEs in that count on that chart, the funding strategy with the Tourism Commission, and this budget really is fundamental to that relationship and that funding source in that department moving forward. So we gained a ton of capacity with these couple actions, only to be followed up by the actual contract for services here in the next couple months. But just another brief mention, Max did a great job. It was one of the things that I was going to mention if he didn't, of course he did, but just to reiterate, the conservative budgeting annually by the Common Council and the mayor for those revenues. It's really easy to say, we could do some great things with another $500,000 of interest earnings, and then next year, that's not there, and you're wondering how you make payroll. So really, it's a tenant. You've really valued that approach over the many years, and it's really helped to achieve fiscal sustainability for the community. So just wanted to reiterate that point.
Anything else, guys? Okay, seeing none? Motion, please.
Ritzel, move to adopt Resolution number 12500-060424, amending the 2024 budget.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
And item seven is under community development, and it's consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by Brad Schmidt for the property at 9600 South Howell. Kristy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a pretty straightforward lot split. This is a single-family lot, vacant lot on the east side of Howell, just located south of Ryan Road. The proposed split divides the lot evenly into two new parcels. The two parcels that will be created will meet the requirements of the RS3, the size requirements, and will provide the opportunity to construct and build two new single-family homes. With it being on Howell, a very busy street, there is a joint shared driveway, and easement is dedicated in the certified survey map, so it'll be one driveway down the middle of the new lot line. Plan Commission recommended approval at its May 28th meeting.
Great. Any questions concerning the certified survey map? Anything? Okay, seeing no discussion or questions, motion, please.
Ritz moves to adopt Resolution number 12501-060424, approving the certified survey map submitted by Brad Schmidt for the property at 9600 South Howell Avenue.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
And item eight is consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by William Nelson. The seller for the property is at 800 and 812 West Oakwood Road. Kristy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This application before you is a certified survey map to combine two parcels. One of the two is currently occupied by the seller, the seller, C-E-L-L-A-R, and they are purchasing the parcel that bounds them to the east and to the north. And the two parcels are zoned differently today, M1 Manufacturing and B2 Community Business, but this was discussed at the last Common Council meeting. We did a comprehensive land use map amendment, and a public hearing for rezoning will be forthcoming. Plan Commission recommended approval at its May 28th meeting.
Thank you, Kristy. Any questions concerning the property down with the seller as to what they plan to do and why they're doing it? Nope? Okay, seeing no questions or discussion, motion, please.
Marshall will move to approve Resolution number 12502-060424, approving a certified survey map submitted by William Nelson. The seller for the properties at 800 and 812 West Oakwood Road.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
And item nine is engineering, and it's consideration of a resolution approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with Oak Creek Residents LLC for the single-family attached for the same, single-family attached development located at ninety-one-oh-two South Twenty-seventh Street. Matt.
Thank you, Mayor and Common Council. Matt Sullivan, Assistant City Administrator and Engineer. Before you is that resolution for adopting the stormwater management practice agreement. If you recall, this development has been around for about a year or two. The development agreement was approved in August of twenty-twenty-three, and recently, the stormwater management plan was approved by MMSD and Engineering in May. So before you will be the maintenance agreement, which is pretty standard practice on their requirements on maintaining that pond.
Questions for Matt? Then you're off easy. No questions, discussion, motion?
Marshall will move to adopt resolution number one-two-five-zero-four-dash-zero-six-zero-four-two-four.
Kuzakowski, a second.
Nope. Go back. I have the wrong one.
That's right.
Okay. Marshall will move to approve resolution number one-two-five-zero-three-dash-zero-six-zero-four-two-four, approving a stormwater management practice maintenance agreement with Oak Creek Residence LLC for single-family attached development located at ninety-one-oh-two South Twenty-seventh.
Kuzakowski, a second. Roll call.
Elderwoman Marshall.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
And item ten is fire, and it's consideration of a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for training facilities and services with the city of Wauwatoosa Fire Department. And Chief Kresik will explain the contract.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Kresik, Fire Chief. Tonight, seeking your consideration of a resolution that allows the fire department to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Wauwatoosa Fire Department. Two background items that I think are very germane to this conversation tonight. This is not a new type of agreement for the fire department as it relates to Milwaukee County. We already have existing agreements for shared service, mutual aid packs, as well as equipment sharing and other training packs. What this agreement does, it extends our collaboration with other Milwaukee County fire departments to the recruit training area. There is probably not a more important time or training curriculum than what we provide our new recruits to the fire department. More now than ever, our recruits are coming in very green. In the past, when candidate pools were very large, it was easy to pick candidates with extensive training and experience in the fire service. Our candidate pool has gotten much younger and fresher to the fire service, requiring a, a more rapid and comprehensive training before they can be counted for staffing. Along with that is the product they provide in the field. That training needs to create great firefighters that can meet the needs of the community, and that can also perform very safely. Since about twenty-twenty-one, the Oak Creek Fire Department collaborated with Greenfield and Greendale Fire Departments on a south-side training academy. Mayor, I know you attended a couple of those graduation ceremonies. Very successful endeavor for the fire department, for the fire departments. As conditions are, that model of a south-side training academy is no longer sustainable. The two biggest reasons for that relate to dedicated fire training facilities and availability of instructors. We were fortunate to have a dedicated facility for approximately three years that allowed us to run that academy twice a year. With that facility no longer available, it's put all the departments in a bit of a bind in looking for a facility, an area that we could distribute this training through. That's led us to the point where we've looked at the JFTA, the Joint Fire Training Academy, hosted by the city of Wauwatoosa Fire Department. That recruit training program has been in existence since approximately two thousand and twelve, predominantly serving TOSA, West Dallas, North Shore fire departments. Again, a very successful model, a very similar model to what we ran on the south side. Same procedures, same guidelines are utilized throughout the county for emergency services, especially in terms of fire and rescue. So the training model is very similar. This agreement solves our two biggest problems in terms of facilities and instructors. It's a dedicated training site hosted by the Wauwatoosa Fire Department with a training tower, multiple classrooms, and areas for storage. Additionally, it has a much larger instructor cadre than we've been able to provide on the south side. We've had the opportunity to test this model, the JFTA, with two recent candidates, kind of a try-before-you-buy model to, to see if it meets our needs. I can wholeheartedly tell you that it does. It's a very comprehensive training. We have sent three instructors out there. Our intention is to embed those instructors into that program when recruit academies occur, especially when we're going to have our own members go through that. So our recommendation from the fire department is the consideration and approval of that IGA allowing us to function in the JFTA. Financially, the, the IGA will spell out certain cost points for participation. That funding will be obtained through our training line item within our budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions related to the program.
Questions for Chief Kresik. Chief, I would imagine the training facility, I mean, at one point you utilize a vacant store at South Ridge, things of that nature. Where else were you training?
That was our, for the recruit academy, that was our predominant location, was a vacant store at South Ridge Mall. Two-story, a lot of open space, and allowed all the municipal departments to build props and training evolutions within there. Served us very well, and it was out of the weather in a lot of cases, which allowed that recruit academy to continue without weather concerns. The problem we did also have with that location was the ability to provide live burn training to our recruits. You can't recreate live burn training without actually going into a structure with some level of fire. So that was always something that we were scrambling either through Milwaukee Area Technical, Technical College, or donated homes that were slated for demolition that would allow us to do that. The benefit of the TOSA Training Academy is that's a dedicated burn building. So during their recruit training, Thursday and Fridays are dedicated to multiple burns throughout the day. Can't recreate that with the program we were using. That really is something that sets that training apart, provides a much better, realistic experience.
Thank you for the education. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no other questions, motion on ten, please.
Ritz will move to adopt resolution number one-two-five-zero-four-dash-zero-six-zero-four-two-four, approving an intergovernmental agreement for training facilities and services with the city of Wauwatoosa Fire Department.
Kirkowski, a second. Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And item eleven and twelve concern the license committee, and I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. First item, number eleven, concerns all the renewal of alcoholic beverage license applications. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns? All right. Seeing none?
Wait a minute, I have a question. There was an email that came out from Krista regarding Melrose, did that come in?
It did.
Thank you.
What's that?
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry.
Oh, no problem, no problem. Okay, Kirkowski, make a motion to grant the two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-five renewal business alcohol license request as listed on the June fourth, two thousand and twenty-four report with issuance and release of license subject to final department inspections, approvals, and payment of any fees or obligations.
Ritz, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
And item twelve is various license requests for primarily transient merchants. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns on that line item? Agenda item. All right, seeing none, Kirkowski, make a motion to approve the various license requests as listed on the June fourth, two thousand and twenty-four report, B, license committee report.
Ritz, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item thirteen is our vendor summary report for May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, the amount of five hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. Please take a look at your provided list, and if there are any questions, please take the floor. You're satisfied, there is no questions, discussions, motion?
Marshall will move to approve the May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four vendor summary report in the total of five hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Kuzakowski, a second. Roll call.
Elderwoman Marshall.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
And before we adjourn, I'd like Alderman Kirkowski to make some civic announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. From the sports department here, I just want to acknowledge on behalf of the council and the mayor and the city of Oak Creek to congratulate the varsity baseball team from Oak Creek, who are not only conference champions this year, but they played today in the sectional games. They defeated Kenosha Trumper six to one, moved on to defeat Kenosha Indian Trail Academy five-zero, so they are the sectional champions. And they move on to the quarterfinals, June tenth. Don't know what time, depends on what seed they are, either morning or afternoon games. And that'll be played up at Fox City Stadium in Grand, Grand Shoot, and then semifinals, June twelfth, if they make it that far. And hopefully, they'll be playing in a championship game on June thirteenth.
So where is that at?
Uh, Fox City Stadium's in Grand Shoot.
Oh.
Up near Appleton area, yep, yeah. So if you need tickets, they're available online. Sorry, that was the, the, the cheap shot at buying tickets there on the WIA website, so.
And before we meet again, Town Square will be hosting our first pop-up beer garden June thirteenth, and there'll be a Flag Day celebration on June the fourteenth. The American Legion will be in to help us take care and retire flags. And there will be celebrations going on regarding Flag Day. So if you can, come out and join us. With that, adjournment.
Kirkowski, make a motion to adjourn.
Ritzels. Go ahead.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski. Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
All right. Night, everybody. Have a great week.